This conference will now be recorded.
The United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Sean Talk, can we just make sure we mute the attendees if you would? Thank you.
All right, well, call meeting to order and consider the agenda. If there are no changes, then we'll move on to item one, which is request for comments from the public. If anyone has comments from the public, you'll have three minutes. At the beginning, please state your name and address. Once you have 30 seconds left, I'll give you a quick signal to kind of wrap it up and we'll go from there.
You can make that, make sure that mic is on. Thank you.
There being none. Oh, did you?
Hello. Can you hear me? Is this working?
Yeah.
I guess I gotta get it closer. I'm Mary Wilson. I live at seventeen twenty-eight South Hundred and Fourth Terrace in Edwardsville Williamson Farms. I'm a walker. I get up every day and I walk. I have a little two point seven seven mile stroll that I like to take. In the wintertime, I find ice on the sidewalk along Edwardsville Drive. That's an area that the city mows regularly during the summer. But no effort has been made to clear that sidewalk of snow in the wintertime. And the snowplows come through and pile snow at each crossing, crosswalk area. And last year, we didn't have enough snow to matter. The years before, I've crossed eighteen inch, two foot drifts trying to get through the crosswalks. And then there's ice that forms. And so you walk in ankle deep snow. The first day, the second day, you're walking on ice because your footprints are now ice. And I'm not the only one walking, so the sidewalk gets trampled in its ice. So I'm here to request that some consideration of clearing the sidewalk south of the school and along Edwardville Drive. I say to the sidewalk that goes nowhere up there, I walk to the end and turned around. And then speaking of sidewalks, I've heard that there's some discussion about putting a sidewalk along Hundred and Fourth Street. That's also an area that I walk and I find it rather treacherous on the hills, walking. If somebody comes up over those hills, I've had times that I've needed to kind of hop over to the side because they don't see you. So if there is some consideration of putting a sidewalk along there, I would certainly be in favor of that. I volunteer at the school. I walk to the school three days a week along that street. And I find it kind of treacherous. And I'm not the only one that's walking that street every day. We also walk through the cemetery because it's the only trail that's safe to walk. But anyway, that high sidewalk along Edward Farm there to the school to connect all the sidewalks together would make a nice walking trail for me. So thank you.
Thank you. And if anyone else has a public comment, now would be the time to do that. Okay? Sure. So you'll, I think you missed the very beginning. So you'll just start, state your name and address. And you'll have three minutes when you have 30 seconds left. I'll just give you a little signal if you need to kind of wind it down and.
I'll make it sweet and short, I promise.
The floor is yours.
I'm Audrey and this is my husband Jeff. We live off of Hundred and Fourth. We're right there on, it's like Hundred and Fourth and Schwartz almost. Axe, A-X-E. Yep, and he's a fireman too. We're, you know, government employees. I just wanted to piggyback off of her sidewalk comment. We are always walking up and down that hill and right on our street is a very blind section. So when we're going up that hill, I don't know how many times we've had to jump out of the way for vehicles coming. So I think sidewalks would make it a lot safer, especially for our kiddos. We have a lot of young kids in our area. So I think the bicycles and stuff like that would be a lot safer on the sidewalk. So I just want to piggyback off of that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Judy Curtis. I live at one oh four one five Metropolitan Avenue. And just to re, just to go on about the sidewalk, I just wanted to put my two cents in. I walk a lot too, and that's just very dangerous along there. People coming up over the hill, they can't necessarily see you or whatever. So I'd be for the sidewalks also, just wanted you to know.
Thank you. Okay. If anyone else has public comment? Nope. We'll go on and move to item number two, which is consider approval of the consent agenda items. If anyone has any questions about this specifically, feel free to have that removed from consent agenda. Otherwise, I'll wait to hear a motion on approval of the consent agenda items.
Mayor, do we need to make a note in the motion for the bottom portion of this to be amended or anything?
No, that's just a note for context and the financial benefit.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to approve consent agenda items two A and two B as written.
Second. Do the motion in a second. Will the clerk please call roll?
Bishop?
Yes.
Malo?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Yes. Moving on to item number three, consider authorizing this interim city manager to enter into a contract with FTC Equipment for repair services for the Wood End Pump Station.
Mayor, I'll call in Director Goodall to make the presentation.
Well, it might be, yeah, we'll catch y'all, we'll catch the comments better on the mic.
Mayor Council, you have before you a contract with FTC. It's for a hundred and forty horsepower motor. It's with our Wood End Lift Station. That station was designed to have four pumps in it. It is our main station. All of our flow runs through there, anything south of town. We've currently been running that with two pumps. We had the storm roll through about two weeks ago, actually tripped out one of our pumps. Things got a little bit nervous because the first diagnosis said they thought the pump was down and gonna need major repair. Luckily, it didn't. We were able to do a little more diagnosis and get it for a small, simple repair. But it kind of brought it to our attention. We had a pump already at FTC that was in need of repair that's been put on the back burner for more than nine months because it was there before I got here. So, but I think with this being our largest lift station, we need to get that third pump in there just exactly for what happened. We don't need to be sitting here with one pump trying to rely on it to make sure we're getting all of our sewage pump to the treatment plant. So with that said, I think we would like to move forward with that repair for nineteen thousand five hundred eighty dollars and thirteen cents. We did also have FTC bought us a new pump at sixty-five thousand six hundred and two dollars. So we would recommend going with the repair.
It's just gonna rewind it?
Yeah, rewinding, and then there were some other things that had to be done with the two seals and things.
So you said we have four pumps in that?
We, we don't have four. No, we have four pumps. One of them was torn out there. One was in storage, which we're having them do a service on it because I would like to have all four of them put back in the station so they're all there available.
Well, next meeting, can you have an estimate for us on bringing the fourth one in?
We're already sending, it was five hundred dollars to get it serviced.
Oh, that's.
So I've got it sent there. It's already being serviced, should be put back in here hopefully in the next couple of weeks.
All right.
Is this something that we would typically have another bid on since it's?
Yeah, and it kind of was unique because of it already being at FTC and being torn apart. They've done our repairs before. From what I understand, they've done all of it in the past, actually, in recent past. So with it already being torn apart, it's almost impossible for us to get someone else to come in and give us a quote on it. So we decided just to try and move forward with it kind of being something that feels kind of out of our hands as far as it being torn apart and unable to be sent somewhere else to be diagnosed, so.
I know there's several companies out there, you know, that do the lift station, especially with this size. And probably it's been a while since we lifted bids. Maybe it's good for next time, just to make sure we're getting competitive bid. And if that lift station's a four, four pump station and we're, you're hoping to get two back online, maybe possibly three. I mean, would it be in our best interest to have a new pump sitting on the shelf and ready to go in case this, another one or two fails?
I, if we've got three active and actually with the fourth one going in with four active pumps in there, unless, I just don't see a reason to have another one sitting around. Honestly, those pumps sitting around outside, because these are submersible pumps, if they're outside of the water, it's truly not the greatest storage you can do for them. So honestly, we would be better off if we, if we just wait on that. The only problem is when you do have a new pump, we didn't put it in this, but the new pump lead time is almost six months. So if we're actually looking for a new pump, we're gonna be sitting for a while. So, so now as long as we've got four pumps in there, at least three, and now we'll have four, I feel very confident we should be able to become where that station needs to.
And Mayor, we'll, we will, as a staff, we'll go out, try to find some different contractors specific to this product. We move forward on it because this has been our history in the sense they, they know our machines, they've been working on them. And so we're just, and again, they have one at the state, their shop already torn down. Just need to authorize, put that stuff back together, get them deployed, and then we can move forward with some comparative contractors.
Yeah.
We do have a list of.
Every once, every once in a while is a good idea to review this.
We have a list of contractors that can quote. I mean, it was just that it was already torn apart. That was really the only reason there weren't other quotes given this time. So, but typically, we've got at least, I would guess, four other companies that would probably have quoted it, so.
I think up north, we've had, you know, with our experience up there, you know, I think we've had, there's two lift, there's two pumps in our lift station. And I think we've repaired and rebuilt them twice. The third time, it's not a rebuild, they're, they're junk.
Replace.
Everything just wore out. So it's, that's why I was asking about having another one, you know, on standby that you could, if one goes down and you have another, just slide it in. Because we don't want, we want to make sure we can continue that flow, make sure we have that pump in place and running.
I do think it's important that we keep a track of, you know, we, now we're rebuilding this pump. We know if it has a problem, the next time it's probably not another rebuild, it's probably a replacement. And we've got those documents, so I mean, we'll have that on, on hand.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the repair completed by FTC Equipment LLC in amount of nineteen thousand five eighty thirteen cents to be funded out of super fund.
Do the motion in a second. Will the clerk please call roll?
Bishop?
Yes.
Malo?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes. Item number four on the agenda is consider use of ARPA funding for Hundred and Fourth Street sidewalk project and authorizing the interim city manager to enter into contract with BHC for professional services related to the same.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna handle this myself. Ask both Zach Daniel and Bradley Ho-Kaver to take a look at this, get the information. This is the action item from our previous discussion. We've had about three week break in between these meetings and we, we got to work on the soft costs is what we're talking about. From the last meeting, there was consensus to move forward with this. Think this is a great prod, project. I think we have some audience members who think the same thing. So we're really talking in a, I think, a good language here. So what we're asking is forty-three thousand two hundred and fifty dollars for BHC, our engineer, city engineer, to survey and design plans and provide for the final cost of the project of extending the sidewalk from Hundred and Fourth, from Metropolitan Avenue, essentially up to the elementary school. So you're talking Williamson Farm up to the elementary school. Now, as a note, the new project, the housing project that's going in at Highland, they'll have sidewalks that will come down and then also somewhat connect. So this is a real good connector on two sides of the school. And so essentially, again, we're talking to soft costs. They're gonna do the surveys, they're gonna do the plan design and the final cost estimates for us for forty-three thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. And so we would recommend that we proceed with that.
Chief, on this map that we have here, so the proposed sidewalk is blue. Is that all of what the city is, is talking, taking care of or is some of that the Highlands subdivision?
Yeah, this has no tie-in on this side with the Highland, the piece. They're gonna tie down to the existing sidewalk already up, up on the, what would be the south and the east corner, right? That's where they're at. So this is all of what we will accomplish with the money that we're gonna spend. And right now, high level estimates, we're gonna be in about a hundred thousand dollars. And right now, this is forty-three thousand of that cost, so.
Forty-three.
Give or take, yeah. We're asking for the forty-three thousand ARPA funds. Again, this is a great project, highly tangible, citizen centric. We can see it, we can fill it. It, it, not only for the residents that attended tonight, but our schoolchildren that their parents are gonna walk them to school, which right now, our school is not walkable. That's not a thing, right? And this is the start of that. I think it's really gonna be important.
Mark, I can't remember, it's maybe been a year ago, eight months ago, we, we talked about the sidewalk and then Williamson Farm subdivision. I, I know we're, all of us are for a sidewalk going to this school. But I was thinking that we had discussion about there was an easement or a right of way within Williamson Farms, not, not necessarily this, you know, attaching to the sidewalk, but another easement between two properties, you know, in one of these cul-de-sac areas that were pretty much across the street from Williamson or from the elementary school. Did we look into that?
Well, I, I don't know if we're mixing two different projects here, but we did a lot of right of way acquisition already on this project. That's why I kind of use it as a shovel-ready more than the other project that we talked about at Fourth Street up to the, somewhat the Dollar General. That, right, but this, this had a lot of attention already. And maybe, maybe, I don't know of another project that where there's some acquisition of right of way for sidewalks, but it's very possible.
I mean, I know I've slept since we've talked about this, but do you guys remember that at all?
So I think Chief, what, what Councilman Scott's referring to is in addition to this, there's a right of way that the city obtained years ago within the Williamson Farms development that would potentially give maybe a midpoint access for the residents in Williamson Farms to get to the school that we might be able to look into in addition to, in, in addition to the.
Yeah, I agree. I think the answer is we're gonna have to go back and just do some research, catch up on, on what was done in the past and maybe how, then we can talk to how we connect that in at some point as well. So let, let's do the research and, and we can come back to you.
And I was gonna ask you, I am very much in favor of this project. I think it would be great for our residents to tie into our trail system to bring walkability, but most importantly, to get our kids safely to school. The question that I had though was on the survey, plan, design and final cost estimate. It has a hundred and ninety-six hours of labor. I felt like that seemed like a lot for sidewalk prep. And so I'm, like I said, I'm really in favor of this. I just wonder if we might be able to, if we, if we move forward with it, say up to forty-three thousand two fifty and kind of push back on BHC and say, is this an accurate accounting for the hours? Because it just seems kind of high.
Do I hear you that not to exceed is kind of the direction you'd like to go in?
Yeah, and so then I would maybe ask you to just follow up and say, okay, how is this gonna be a hundred and ninety-six hours for the preliminary?
Okay.
Like I, or if, I don't know if we go to bids on that or what, but I, I do want to, I want to move forward, but I just want to make sure that we're making the absolute best use of the, the money for the project to get it done. Because if we can save money, we might be able to go even further, you know, work on a crosswalk or things like that. That would be beneficial with the money.
I, I, yeah, and I fully agree. I plead in favor of this sidewalk. I would just be, I would be concerned going into a contract agreement with BHC Roads right now, especially if we find there's an easement within Williamson Farm subdivision that deals with public, you know, public right of way or our right of way within the Williamson Farms versus this, you know, this right of way along Hundred and Fourth Street. I think it's kind of two different animals in, in some regard, so the expense could be just drastically reduced. You're also plucking almost fifteen hundred feet of, you know, of sidewalk in, in relation to, it could be, you know, less than five hundred, which it could be big savings in, in concrete. I think the sidewalk along Hundred and Fourth Street would be great for, you know, people walking and stuff like that. As for our students and children, I mean, I raised my daughters and I live in Williamson Farms and I would have loved if we could have had a path through here to get to the school. I would have loved to have been able to walk my kids to school. And so I would, I really would like for us to explore all of our options within Williamson Farms. If there's a right of ways, I, I know there's a pond right now at the south end of Hundred and Fourth Terrace right now that's owned by Sheldon. And, you know, we could get an easement there for a five foot sidewalk. And then along the Peterson's property, that would take us right to the school.
Okay. I'd like to make a mention on that side. I'm in favor of the sidewalk too. I don't want anybody to think I'm thinking of it. But Greg is right, there was, when that Williamson Farms was developed, there was an easement going across where the south end of the blue line is. And the issue, one of the issues that I have is that where are the kids gonna go when they cross the street there? They're gonna walk into a forty-five degree bank. The school district is gonna have to erect some kind of access for them and it would have to be ADA acceptable for wheelchairs, you know, whatever. And then when they get on the school property, they're gonna be walking across the driveway where the parents use their cars to pick the students up. It's gonna have to be some, some consideration with the school district on designing this thing. The other thing that I am kind of concerned with is I have been requesting a sidewalk for probably four years from the Fourth Street and the railroad tracks to get people that live south of the tracks to the Dollar General store. And I think that maybe if we want to consider this sidewalk, we ought to consider the people on the south side of the tracks also. And maybe include that in, in any kind of these estimates and these studies that you're doing right now. The other issue that I have is I've been asking for four years what the instruction packet is on us to be able to use the ARPA funds. And I have never gotten an answer for that. And I know that there's five people sitting right up here that could figure out a lot of things to do with that money. If we had an, an instruction manual on how to deal with, that's my fifteen cents worth for that. I am in favor of sidewalks. I think in the past, I've always been, we, I built, we built the sidewalk from here to the post office probably twenty years ago. And I've always wanted sidewalks and I'm not against this one, but I think that we're getting way too early on this. Forty thousand dollars is a lot of money to spend for that study. It was not sent out for bids. There's other, there's other companies that can engineer this stuff. And I think the mayor said earlier, that's a biddable project. Well, I would say that this is a biddable project too. That's where I stand on that.
You can, Bradley, do we still have the plat from Williamson's Farm, the final plat? You, all the easements should be on it.
So, um, there is a. Don't really have a, a visual prepared, but we do have a, a ten foot utility and pedestrian easement on lot one fifty-six and one fifty-five, which is the south corner, southeast corner, west of, of a hundred and, hundred and ten there.
Does that go across Hundred and Fourth though?
Yeah.
Does it go across?
So it's the, it's the last cul-de-sac of that subdivision. And it's a diagonal ten foot utility and pedestrian easement. That's currently fenced in by both of those properties.
Right, I remember that.
Yeah.
When you say the last cul-de-sac, do you mean the furthest or the closest to Metropolitan?
So where that blue dot is at the very end.
Runs like this.
It's right at that corner.
Thank you. So I think Chief, if, unless, unless I'm misunderstanding, we are all really in favor of this. Let's, let's make sure that we're, if there's any other right of ways that we can use, maybe in addition to, maybe instead of, we'll, we'll kind of let staff bring us some recommendations on that and then potentially look at bidding it to make sure, like I said, if, if we can get those hours down, we could potentially make the sidewalk even better. And so, but, but I think that is a priority for us. If I remember right, the Fourth Street sidewalk we, we looked into and it had a lot more complications, but we're, it's not off the table. We're still pursuing some information.
That's correct. Yeah, it's not off the table. It's, as I mentioned earlier, this, this is certainly more shovel-ready than that one. There's a lot of obstacles. You have a railroad, we have a number of right of way issues, K thirty-two. That's a, that's a real monster compared to this one for sure. As far as some of the access to the school and things, that's what your engineer is for, to, to figure out ways to get there. Spoken to the superintendent, they're behind it a hundred percent. However, if they can help, I think they would offer, and so they're behind getting a, getting a sidewalk up there as well. So I agree, if we, if there are other avenues to get there, then we'll certainly look at those. This was conceptually put together when we were talking about this area previously. So this is, this thing is ramped up to our discussion today. So there was, there was this kind of work, right of way acquisition, all that kind of stuff was already happening previously. And so this, the next phase really would be to get the engineering on it. And as far as BHC is our designated official city engineer, and that's why we reached out to them and engaged them as a priority. But if we think we need to go out for bids, we can certainly do that. So, and for this, for this particular work in comparison, I also heard, you know, not to exceed, we can go back to them and would they be comfortable with that? So nothing has to happen today, you don't have to take any action. However, we just need some consensus on what it is that you would like us to do. If you'd like to go out to bids, we would, we'd, we'd give you that opportunity. Look at some easements is what I'm hearing as well. Okay, we'll, we'll get that done as well and present you with some other options, it sounds like.
I think that would be great all at once, to, to get some bids, present the, the packages, the options. I think, I know we've been hearing for quite some time and even tonight that this is really a desire of the residents.
Yeah.
A great way to use ARPA funds, tax dollars anyway, if we can serve our residents with their tax dollars, that is definitely something worth pursuing. And so, yeah, let's reconvene on it here pretty soon and get some moments in behind and get it going.
We'll take that and run with it. So is there any explanation on ARPA use funds?
Oh, so this would be ARPA reimbursable fund, so it's pretty.
Yeah.
And if you, you can add to this, but my understanding is it's pretty wide open for uses because it's revenue reimbursement ARPA funds.
Right.
Have we reached out to the school district? Have anybody talked to them about?
Yeah.
I mean.
Message them and the superintendent's on board. He's a hundred percent behind sidewalks.
But I mean, I know the sidewalk thing, but.
He wanted to here and I said, I don't think that was necessary.
But I mean, about improving their side of the street.
I'm sorry again.
About improving their, getting, you know, the cow path.
Next discussion.
Yeah.
We don't have the engineer.
Right.
Yeah, you have to start somewhere.
Well, they're, they're gonna have to consider crossing guards down there.
Yeah.
They're gonna have to consider crossing guards down there. You know, how do you get the kids up the hill? You know, they're between two driveways. And when they get up there, I've delivered kids, you know, up there before and that's where the parents drive there and sit there and wait for their kids.
I think the school district is actually for it and the principal has talked about it. So I think they, they, that they would, they've been considering it for a long time. Because I've talked to some of the teachers there at the school and they've said that the principal has, that was a desire of hers to have that, so.
Don't get me wrong, I'm not against the sidewalk at all. I'm just, I think the approach that we're doing is too quick and I think we need to sit back and go. There's other odds. Forty, this money, forty, that's a lot of money to have somebody draw something on.
It's a lot of money.
I've gone up there and looked at, I was up there today looking at them. I can see exactly where that sidewalk can go. They might have to cut down a couple of trees, they're gonna have to bring some dirt in for a sidewalk. That's what they gotta do. I don't understand where the forty-four thousand dollars is from.
Well, I think that's part of what they do is if they miss.
They're not the only engineering firm in the state either.
Yeah, I think we have our parsing papers, you know, our orders. Go out, get some of this information back in, you can make a more informed decision in the later day.
Yeah, that sounds good. I think we're, we're all excited about the project. Let's get a little bit more information so we can move forward with all the information we need.
We hear from a staff perspective, we're gonna focus on the more shovel-ready part of this first, then we could move into the Fourth Street and decide a, you know, a method that's all about that, getting us right up in.
That'd be great.
Private property, there's rebel property, there is K thirty-two setbacks. So we, preliminary have an idea, but we're not ready to put all that together just yet.
Yeah, Mark, I think just a quick comment as we think about this and, you know, like I said, the proposed concrete's fifteen hundred, a little under. If we can, if we can do the five hundred feet thing on the easement through Williamson Farms, that's a lot less concrete, obviously for the kids to be walking and, you know, the distance from the cul-de-sac into the front door of the school. But then also think about the wintertime and, you know, if we just wanna take care of that concrete and that sidewalk and keep it clear so the kids can walk to school. I think CE would like the five hundred feet versus fifteen hundred feet of sidewalk taken here.
The concrete alone, the concrete alone's forty-eight thousand dollars, just the concrete. Because it's a hundred and sixty-five dollar yard.
Yeah.
Okay. I think we're good to move on to item number five, your staff presentation regarding the development of the fiscal year twenty twenty-four annual budget.
Mayor, I'll call on Zach Daniel, city manager, to make a presentation. What we promised to deliver is choices. We have options, make an informed decision.
Uh, what we promised to deliver is choices. We have options, make a informed decision. And I think, uh, Daniel, well, it's a team to get where we are. We are under some timeframe, but it's not immediate. Pour the information and give us some feedback on the direction you'd like us to go.
All right. Madam Mayor, members of council, so this is the latest in our budget development workshops that we've been having since May. Uh, what this presentation will do is kinda prevent or provide you with, um, some of the staff options for largely the discussion's gonna be circled or centered around the, um, general fund and the mill levy associated with the general fund. Um, we do have some information, uh, at the end of the presentation about the other funds and our debt service fund. But most of the discussion at this point has been surrounding the, uh, general operations of the city, which are, are all funded out of the general fund. So with that in mind, I would do wanna jump into mill levy discussions and the R and R impacts of should the council decide to, uh, uh, make adjustments to the mill levy. So just as a reminder, what we've accomplished to this point is notice, provide notice that we'll be having a public hearing on August twenty-eighth, uh, noticing that we intend to exceed the revenue neutral rate. Now what that does is, is set the maximum, um, uh, uh, mill levy for the fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget at what our current mill levy is. So that forty-one point, excuse me, I should have memorized this point, forty-one point six nine two is the maximum that we could set our mill levy, which is exactly the same as the mill levy for fiscal year twenty twenty-three. The, uh, the public hearing that is set for August twenty-eighth currently is specifically about the intent to exceed that. We will need to call a separate public hearing other than that for final adoption of the budget, which can occur on that date. And I think, you know, after this presentation, depending on council direction, that we could be ready to hold that, both of those public hearings on the August twenty-eighth date. Uh, so with that, let's dive into the mill levy impacts, um, depending on some of the options that we've been looking at. So what you're seeing in front of you is a table that shows what, uh, the first column, the fiscal year twenty twenty-three estimate, uh, what our current mill levy is, what the assessed valuation is, and what our property tax revenue for fiscal year twenty twenty-three. For our current mill levy, again, this is just in the general fund, is thirty-one point two seven four. The assessed valuation we were provided by the county was ninety-one million. And our property tax revenue that we estimate to end the year with is two point eight million. If we were to keep the mill levy the same, uh, for, at, for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, the mill levy for the general fund would be thirty-one point two seven four. The assessed valuation, the preliminary assessed valuation that the county provided us is a hundred million. And our property tax revenue would be three point one million to the city. The fiscal year twenty twenty-four revenue neutral rate, so this is a rate that the county calculates based on the formula that the state prescribes that would net us, uh, around the same amount of money, uh, as the previous year. Uh, that would reduce our mill levy by, um, to that twenty-seven point six one six. So that, what that represents is a reduction of about three hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars in revenue to the general fund from property taxes, bringing it to, uh, property tax revenue of around that two point eight million. So you'll see that two point eight million in twenty-three matches the two point eight million in fiscal year twenty twenty-four. And then your assessed valuation in twenty-four matches on both of those slides. So that's kinda how things are shaking out at this point from the, how we're, uh, essentially providing the, uh, the, the lanes that we're working within in terms of this discussion. The maximum mill level we can go to for the general, for the whole, uh, budget is forty-one point six nine two. And for the general fund purposes, if we're not going to adjust the debt service fund at all, that mill levy would be thirty-one point two seven four. Any questions at this point? So going into the different mill, mill levy scenarios that staff has put together. So at our last, to kinda recap our previous discussions, we had presented essentially an all-in budget. Uh, here's what we, how things seem to be shaping, uh, or shaken out when we discuss this in mid-July. So that was the staff, uh, based on the metrics we had at that point. Here is kind of what we are hearing from our department heads about operations. Here's what we're recommending from a compensation, compensation adjustment standpoint. And then giving you, here's what, how that is standing at this point with the intent of revisiting those numbers as we get more data throughout the year. The next meeting, we talked about, uh, more of the other funds outside of the general fund. So what this is doing is kinda revisiting that earlier general fund discussion that we had in mid-July. So, and we're gonna present three options at this point from what the staff has put together and would think would be uh, workable, appropriate, fiscally responsible solutions, uh, strategies for the general fund. So fiscal year twenty twenty-four, option A, this is the no mill levy option. So what this is, is essentially the same mill levy, or same general fund scenario that was presented at the mid-July, um, uh, budget hearing, or it's not budget hearing, but budget workshop. So when we met mid-July, we, we provided the data that showed, here's what it would look like if we did not change the mill levy and what we can afford. Now, we have adjusted that a little bit, so it's not gonna be exactly the same, but it's a less than twenty thousand dollar difference all told. Uh, there is some updated information from, uh, updated revenue that we've received and some different adjustments that we made to staffing. So the, the, the overall, I mean, this is, I mean, we've kinda gone into the weeds and details in earlier presentations, so this is a little bit more higher level. So the big notes from this one is what this does is it maintains the current debt service mill levy as well as a general fund mill levy for a total mill levy of forty-one point six nine two. That gives us a general fund revenue of about seven point seven million, which is a five and a half, five and a half percent increase over last year. Our expenditures are about seven point eight million, so a four percent, four percent increase over last year. And it leaves us with a fifteen point three percent fun, uh, fun balance remaining in the general fund. So that's in keeping with our financial policy of keeping fifteen to eighteen percent of reserves in the bank. This accomplishes that from a, just a number standpoint. From an operation standpoint, uh, it does include the three percent step adjustments for city staff, so keeping people moving through the pay plan. It does include the three percent COLA adjustments for staff, so the three percent cost of living adjustments are included in this. It includes the addition of three full-time staff in the fire department, all funded in quarter one. So the expectation, we would try to fill all of those positions in the first quarter of the year, January ideally. That's how these budgets, this budget specifically is, is laid out. It assumes a hundred percent capacity in staffing from January one to December thirty-one. That very rarely ever pans out, but for budgeting purposes, it's kind of the, the whole pie. It does include a full-time staff member in the police department funded at quarter one, as previously discussed. Really, the main thing that has been changed from a staffing level is in that public works staff position. We would still fund the full-time position, but not, uh, with the intent to start that position in the, at the beginning of quarter two of fiscal year twenty twenty-four. So we'd go the first three months, uh, at current staffing levels and recruiting, starting, you know, in the middle of quarter one for placement of that individual in quarter two. So when, you know, rain starts happening and active and start, stuff starts warming up, um, that kinda, that's strategically when we would work towards placing that new staff member in public works. So any question on option A at this point?
Can that be a full-time position?
Full-time position. Yes, sir.
So just to refresh my memory, maybe we've talked about this. The full-time public works employee, have we been down somebody or is this?
This is a new addition to the, so right now we are, uh, this would be a new, a new addition to answer your question. We've not been, I mean, we have been down and staffing has been down and C E can talk about that a little bit, but this would be in addition to the, right now we're fully staffed, so this would be a new person on top of it.
So what has happened? What has made this first?
Part of it is the team. They have to do a number of things to, uh, and the other piece of that has been, we've been understaffed since the turnover. Uh, we've got people here, we have a person sign the papers and never come back to the job, work day. And we've had this turnover that you're only here three months or less, so we have, so you have three, right? Few of those are doing, say, right-of-way cuts. One's being a safety officer, if you will, the other one's doing the work. So that happened in quite a few of their jobs, team lifting, mowing in certain areas, whatever they might be doing. So the whole, but there was a time when there was, there was, we were two deck and there was only one.
Right. I remember that.
It was all the work, right?
Right. So I, I don't know what caused the whole new position. I understand all that.
Position is really about that, that we're gonna have to be working, get two teams on a regular basis. It does capture some of the turnover, so the lead buffer is built into there. So if you have four, you have three. Cause if you have two, you really have none to put one guy to do for you, right? So we have those kinds of things and there's a, there's enough work out. So what, one of the things we did change is we brought the maintenance from the park, the man that does the maintenance of the park, back to the public works. That had been separate from that position, so there's not any kind of continuity. Nobody else really knows the job. You know, he's on vacation, there's, you know, who's, who's to mow and that sort of thing. And there was a lack of supervision in it on direct, not, not nefarious in any way, it just was the way that things were happening that the staff who was in charge of that were just too busy to go.
In the parks?
In, for the parks, yeah. So he, that, that person was originally assigned to the assistant city manager after they, that was removed from the public works department. What was happening, you might check in, uh, assistant city manager was gone for a week and we, we didn't know where he was, that sort of thing. But that, he was in the public works department previously. So that gives them the extra body right there to use when, for example, it rained for three days, what, what is that man doing? Are they, are they maintenance and the mowers? Are they doing other things? Could they, could we assign him somewhere else? Well, this is the way we could do it. The, the director of public works will, will be able to, you know, assign tasks, understand what he's doing every day and that sort of thing. Again, it's not to throw anybody on the bus, but I think it's a much more efficient system. But the answer to the question is why do we need that other person? It's because, number one, we're down so regularly, it's very hard to recruit, it's a tough position. Uh, we got lucky in our last recruit, we have somebody that lives right here in town. But it took us a long time to fill that position. So if you think of three, you have two. Okay, now somebody's on vacation, they're down. Suddenly, we're not doing. So what we wanna do is have four, so that there can be two teams to do, we can divide them up north, south, other tasks, that sort of thing. And you can assign one of them, shouldn't someone be absent in the park or cemetery, they'll take care of the tasks that are assigned.
That was gonna be my next question.
So that position is still funded out of the parks department. It's just the, it's kinda part of the larger public works crew. So their emphasis is still going to be at the cemetery and at the parks. But they're just a little bit, made a little bit more available to the public works crew, uh, on a kinda as-needed basis, assuming, you know, we've got the, the, the four as described in the staffing model.
So previously, were we contracting out a lot of the mowing or a lot of the work and now it's not gonna be contracted out? I'm, I'm sorry, I gotta ask.
We have our mowing contracts, we're satisfied in those. Adding one more body, you would never see that get mowed. It's just, it's something that, what the contractors bring is more than one person if they need it, their mowers, their liability insurance, that sort of thing. This is just to get accomplished what the city workers do on an everyday basis, in lieu of mowing everything in the city. Right? So that's really the, but, so the contract will stay in place.
Okay.
I mean, you would notice if we had one more person and we took on the mowing, you would notice we weren't getting it done. It's just gonna, it's just too much.
Well, whether, whether.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
All good questions. And this is kinda, it all kinda rolls into all three of the scenarios too, so.
One more question. How many employees in the parks department?
We have two full-time employees in the parks department. One is, is, is our park supervisor, park supervisor who's largely, uh, uh, monitoring our part-time staff as it relates to field preparation for programming, for sports programming, and then our parks. That's full-time. Uh, and then our parks maintenance position that was funded and, uh, I say it's a new position, but it was, you know, three years ago or so, which got the, the emphasis in the cemetery and then the parks ground.
Who now is gonna report to?
Who will now report, yes, to the public.
Since there's, okay.
There's a similarity in the job tasks, the maintenance and the mowing, machine reading, you know, that sort of thing.
Thank you. Thank you.
So option B is a one-half mill, uh, mill levy reduction. So in the general fund, that means it, it goes to a thirty point seven seven four. Uh, overall, the mill levy would be forty-one point one nine two. That's that half-mill reduction. Our revenue goes to, uh, seven point six five. So in the earlier slide, you could see a mill essentially equates to a hundred thousand dollars, give or take. So a half-mill reduction is gonna be a, a reduction of about fifty thousand dollars. Uh, the general fund expenditure goes to seven point six nine, a two point eight increase over the budget for last year. And then our estimated fund balance is at one point two to fifteen point eight percent of the fund balance. So that's a little bit higher, a little bit healthier of a fund balance than actually the no-mill decrease. And the reason for that is, is, is in our staffing model. So it maintains the current debt service level. Uh, so we, again, kinda the direction that we received is to maintain that debt service where it's at, so it can support the level of investment that we wanna make in trails and parks and public facilities and all that to support our projects. Uh, yeah, we've kinda discussed about these long-range projects. It also includes the three percent step adjustments for all staff, keeping them moving through the pay plan. It does include the three percent COLA adjustments for staff, so that's included as well. The, so the major difference that you're gonna see is in the staffing model for the fire department. And credit should really go to the, to the fire chief and the interim city manager for putting it together these, this scenario, uh, for presentation. So what it does is, you know, assuming that we do not get the grant for the, the AFG grant for the fire positions. Assuming we don't get that, what this model does is said, instead of funding all those positions all at once in January at the same time, what we would do is fund one position in quarter one, one position at mid-year at quarter three, and then work towards that addition of the third person with the fiscal year twenty twenty-five budget. So we close out the year, begin twenty twenty-five with the understanding and kinda the expectation that we would fill that third slot and be at the staffing model by the end of the year, rather than try and fill it all at the beginning of the year. So with that, when you're staggering out the, the positions, a, as far as the impact of twenty twenty-four is concerned, it's less one whole position in the fire department and then less a half of position that we wouldn't fund until twenty, until mid-year. So again, staggers out, it's still at the end of the, you know, the intention would be at the end of the fiscal year, at the beginning of fiscal year twenty twenty-five, that we'd be working towards the addition of the, all three of those positions. But this staggers it out, so one in January, one at mid-year, and then the third one to be included in the budget discussion for twenty twenty-five. It still includes a full-time staff position for the police department and it still includes the full-time staff position for public works funded in quarter two. So the big difference here is the half-mill reduction, uh, and as well as the staggering out of the fire, uh, staffing from three all at once to one, one at the beginning, one in the middle, and then, uh, the, working towards that fully three addition by fiscal year twenty twenty-five. With that, it does present a little bit healthier, even though it's got a fun, or excuse me, a mill levy reduction, it does increase the fund balance by the end of the year because the reduction in the staffing costs are more than what the reduction in the mill levy would equate to. So any questions on this scenario?
In this scenario, as I can mention, a grant opportunity, and I know we had talked about that previously, in previous years for police department, fire department, we've tried for that. Are we filling out a new application for a grant or?
So we have already filled out a grant application for, uh, the addition of three fired, fire, fire personnel starting in twenty twenty-four. The council approved or, uh, adopted a resolution earlier this year, essentially authorizing us to move forward with that grant application. The problem is the timing of it. We don't know if we, we will be awarded that grant prior to budget adoption. So that's why our, you know, we can, we're building it in. We are fortunate enough at this point to be in a financial position where, as option A kinda indicates, we can afford it. We can afford it without the grant opportunity largely. Now, it's gonna have some, you know, it's got these impacts in these other areas, but it, it could, if it's a priority of the staff and the, and the council to move in that direction, then we can afford it. Now, what option B does with respect to the cash flow of the general fund and to, uh, to find ways where we can make adjustments to the mill levy while still maintaining our minimum fund balance that's approved in policy, uh, then we would kinda stretch that out. But we won't know if we have the grant awarded until chief, end of September, beginning October, maybe? Yeah, so, I mean, the time's out kinda right when we need to be moving forward with, statutorily, we need to be moving forward with some of these budget decisions. We just won't know that information prior to budget adoption, you know? No, even if we, even if we wait till the end of the, the, how far we could raise statutorily for, uh, to approve the budget. Um, so that's the big change there. So if we get the grant fund all to the good, then we will use those grant funds and we will fund all three positions and it won't have an impact on the general fund.
What we're doing right now is we're planting funds. In the next fiscal year, so what we have to worry about is planting funds. So the risk that you're taking in some way, whether to get an exception, is that we're gonna fund two firefighters in twenty twenty-four. And then if there's a grant award, we can get an exception, maybe they can fund all three, but they'll definitely fund one. If, if four, three additional, it's just how you wanna look at it. But in the sense that we're saying today, that we, I think the risk is we have, we have to go with the rewards of planting funds. In other words, we're gonna prove it now, we just can't just take that back and just like say.
Right.
Okay, we're gonna put this grant fund in a, in that place. So therefore, I say risk, potentially, you're gonna fund a hundred percent of two. And then maybe one will be under the next grant and then deciding how the staffing should go in some other way. We may get an exception to that if we petition the right folks and that, but that's more for the legal to, to really sort out what the planting rules are. So essentially, you should think right now that if you do approve a budget of three firefighters or two firefighters in twenty twenty-four, you're funding those. I think that's correct. And so I think the approach of this whole thing right about the hiring is about, you you should go into it understanding that you're funding it. But not get the grant award, we've done that once before, or that we have to modify the grants in some way. So in a sense, you're going to hire three or two or whatever you choose. They look at your thinking, what advance are ready to look for future funding position? So it's not drive, we're pretty much like, or this will be a third year fine. So we try to draw up for more, we can draw up the office, the public position. But if you like the position, those are, that's our end. Start that, and next that's funding, start thinking about the process. This is just to help us solidify three years after over, make that first step forward with it. So it's not a piece of paper, it goes to, it's not a mobile file plan. Obviously, it still takes compensation, but we're killing the bottom, we're drawing the fallback, but getting it, except for.
Thank you.
I would like to comment on something. I want everybody in this room to think about this. Who do you want showing up at your door? Somebody's going to save your life or somebody's going to cut your grass? Why are we still even talking about cutting fire back? Two guys does not, doesn't eliminate the overtime issue that we keep spending on, correct? Then, so why would we still fund the public works person rather than just fund all three firemen and do do public works later?
Those are considerations, absolutely. I think I think Chief Widdow did put a plan together, which you've already budgeted in, whether it's more money or twenty twenty-four. How he's going to accomplish that equal to free is is the part-time positions come out to be one full-time equivalent. So then he essentially gets free, he gets it for less expenditure, less money. So I mean, this is this is something he and I talked extensively about. We thought it was a good good plan to move forward in option B. Right? We gave you option A, you can have a combination of that as well. You can do whatever you, we're just giving you the considerations. But he does have a part-time plan that that supplements in, so, uh, we're not having a bunch of force backs, calling is that sort of thing. Or we're and and extending our overtime, uh, officials fatigue and all the other stuff. So he does have a plan, he's hired forward by already, uh, and there's more to come. So we're really ramping up that particular program so we can supplement those books in. So what we thought going forward for twenty twenty-four, very simply, we're going to take stagger these two, that's a cash flow, right? Get time to reevaluate what's happened, okay? Then supplement in that whole year with full-time equivalents in the part-time ranks. And that's the plan going forward to accomplish in this fee to accomplish getting us to twenty twenty-four. And what things could change, July, you'll be doing a budget review again. And you could say, you know what, we have the grant that'll fund X, Y, and Z, maybe just one, whatever it might be. Because we may be, that gives us time to reevaluate where we're at. You throw, again, an A, you're throwing a hundred percent, all paying benefits at the fire department, full-time equipment, people, full-time personnel. So that's, we're just giving you the options, so all the considerations are on the table.
And also, from a from a kind of a big picture standpoint, these, you know, these options are really just kind of getting into the the potential makeup of the general fund. What the actual action that the council would do is not approve this specific staffing model, but really just the maximum mill levy consideration that we could get. So if, you know, if if the direction would be to, uh, you know, we've heard the numbers, we we want to consider a half-mill reduction, but bring it back to us with these other kind of staffing, uh, uh, adjustments as we've discussed, and we can do that. Um, again, what the discussion tonight is really consideration of the maximum mill levy and then what from a staff perspective, we can get accomplished from a compensation from staffing, from fund balance, all these kind of things within those different scenarios. So option C is largely the same as option B. The only difference is, uh, it has a full-mill reduction versus a half-mill reduction. And the full-mill reduction, uh, really, it's just an impact impact to the fund balance. So it's fifteen point two versus fifteen point eight percent of general fund expenditures. That's still above our fifteen percent threshold. Obviously, you know, fifteen point eight, sixteen percent is a healthier fund balance than fifteen point two. But if we we could afford it, so we wanted to build that in from a full-mill decrease standpoint. So we've kind of gone through, we're going over these other questions. You know, the only thing in option C as it relates to differences between option B is that full-mill reduction versus the half-mill reduction. The staffing remains the same, it still includes three percent step, it still includes three percent COLA, the debt service mill levy remains the same. Uh, but the kind of proposed staffing model remains the same as option B. It's really just a difference between the cash flow for a general fund, uh, uh, fund balance standpoint.
Zach?
Yes, sir.
Is there a way we can get something that's a, I mean, I understand all this stuff, I mean, something that's like, what it, what do you go buy a two-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand-dollar house as an average, what you did, be whatever, whatever the amount was? How much your tax would go up or are you doing that in a minute?
That's a great question, let's move on to the next slide. That, um, we didn't rehearse that. Um, so what this does is, so again, I've you I've done this in the past where I'm pulling essentially a real-world example, um, trying to match as close to what the county says our median housing value is. Uh, so this is a real-world River Falls address and there and how they are infected from twenty-three to twenty-four, based on some of these different mill levy scenarios. So in twenty twenty-three, this house in River Falls was, uh, their appraised value was two-hundred-and-forty-eight-thousand-four-hundred dollars. It increased fifteen percent in twenty twenty-four with the new valuations that the county put together. And now it's valued at two-hundred-and-eighty-six-thousand-five-hundred-thousand, or excuse, two-hundred-and-eighty-six, two-hundred-and-eighty-six-thousand-five-hundred dollars. So an increase of fifteen percent. So the difference in all these mill levies that we presented is kind of is presented in that table below. So essentially, to kind of walk you through that, option A, that would mean because their valuation went, even if we were to keep the mill levy completely flat, not change it at all, uh, their, uh, this person's property tax bill over the year would go up about a hundred-and-eighty-three dollars a year. Option A, or excuse me, that's option A. Option B, their property tax, uh, with a half-mill reduction would go up a hundred-and-sixty-six dollars a year. Option C, their property tax, uh, paid to the city again, just, I mean, this is just including the city property tax bill, it will go up a hundred-and-fifty. I I think an important distinction would be to note that even in the R and R scenario, this person's tax bill would go up because their bill went up higher than the average increase. So our increase from overall went up ten percent, but this person's specific bill went up fifteen percent. So even if the R and R, so what the R and R does is guarantee, I say guarantee, it's a formula that nets the city the same amount of property tax revenue. But that depend, that varies from house to house depending on how, uh, that's an average. So somebody's house may have only gone up six percent or seven percent. Somebody else's might have gone up twenty-four percent or fifteen percent. So the R and R does not guarantee everybody's property tax value is going to be the same. All it does is net the city the same amount of money. In this person's case, an R and R would still net a sixty-two-dollar increase annually for their property tax bill. So there's a seventeen-dollar difference annually between option A and option B, or about a hundred, a dollar forty-two a month. Between option B and C, it's a sixteen-dollar difference or one thirty-three per month. Between option A and option C, it's about a thirty-three-dollar annual difference, so two seventy-five per month. And then from option A down to the R and R, that's the biggest disparity, is the a hundred-and-twenty-one annual difference or about ten dollars a month, ten point, ten dollars and eight cents. So all this too would be still on the table, that wouldn't really be finalized until we got to, uh, uh, probably the rate-setting piece of the year, once we know what our 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 contract, our solid waste contractor specifically, uh, would be requesting for a rate adjustment. But if we were to use incorporate ARPA funds into this kind of utility bill cost control measure that we've talked about at the last meeting, then you can add in upwards of a a point-six-mill value savings to the resident in that scenario. So for trash customers, whichever, all residential customers have trash, that'd be a point-three, so a little bit more than a quarter mill. That would apply to all residences, I think that's an important distinction because that would not apply to our business customers, because we don't have business customers for solid waste. And then if you're an average user of sewer, then that would also, uh, come with another, a little bit more than a quarter mill reduction. So just hypothetically, were we to go with option B, uh, all in all, that would be what to the taxpayer represent, uh, option B right now is couches a half-mill decrease, uh, with these other kind of ARPA cost control considerations, if we were to implement those, would be about one-point-one, one-point-two mills overall, rather than this is a half-mill included in your property tax bill, if we were to move those savings to other spots. Any questions on that breakdown?
Nice job.
So here are other funds, like, you know, largely our discussion has been circled around the general fund, so there's really not a whole lot of nuance or or technical stuff to to dive into as it relates to the other funds, but here are how they are sh- shaking out. Uh, the debt service fund is, uh, debt service fund is the, um, uh, uh, you know, the one, the other property tax-supported fund of the city. Again, kind of the direction that we've received from the council is to keep that steady as we make room for these other investments that we want to be making. Now, every other place is really not affected by property tax, well, this is really just cost of doing business, uh, paying the contracts related to the solid ways, paying the contracts related to the county, related to the sewer fund. Um, we've got special highway funds, uh, built in, and there's there's revenues built in from sci-fi. So assuming that gets over the line on the county side of the budget, then, you know, we'll have some more money to to dedicate towards street projects. Even without it, we've got three-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars to dedicate towards, uh, street projects, just out of the special highway fund. We get sci-fi, all the better, we could do more with. Um, so any questions? You know, I know this is kind of a broader slide than what the other ones have been, but specifically on any other funds, any activity that we've got planned in them or?
Zach, what goes into the economic development?
So economic development, we don't really budget any revenue into there. So how that got, you know, seeded, I'll say, with money is largely based on when we had a lot of different IRB projects. So was, as the industrial park is, you know, pretty well full up, those IRB projects are just not, you know, emerging as much. Um, so they was largely, the fund balance in there was largely came from things like origination fees for for industrial revenue bond projects, uh, that would get moved into there. Now, we can think of other ways to to seed that that fund for different economic development uses, but right now, you know, if we, and I, you know, I put in seventy thousand dollars for expenditure in there as well, that's just kind of on the, if we have a legal thing that we need to to look at related to a potential housing development or economic development project, then we've got money out of that fund that we can use rather than the general fund. So we we don't typically spend that much money out of there.
The special events, the newer one that we created?
It's newer, I want to say it's, you know, three or four years old at this point, but it's.
Is that the one that when the businesses come in?
No, so what that is is just, that's essentially a, that's it, that's the economic development fund. Um, uh, what the special events fund is essentially the, um, oh, I think you're thinking of the community fund, I'm sorry.
Correct, yes.
That's.
Couldn't think of the name of it.
That's separate, that's not a budget fund of the city. Um, but the special events fund is is the, um, essentially a separate fund to account for autumn fest, the the our our parades, things like that.
Sorry, you you answered my question.
Okay.
Couldn't think of it.
Sorry. So that's the presentation, you know, at this point. So, you know, as 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 Chief mentioned, we do, we're not at the the drop-dead deadline for any of this, but we are approaching it. Next meeting will be the drop-dead deadline to call for, uh, some of these public hearings. And really, in staff opinion, we're probably not going to receive any other materially significant new data or revenue information that's going to materially change any of our estimates for this year, which is going to affect the fund balance and might affect some of the outward projections. Um, so, you know, we're, from a staff perspective, I think, prepared, pending council direction, to to keep this train rolling. And what the proposed action would be, would be to call for a public hearing to take place on the twenty-eighth, again, separate from the uh, R and R hearing, which has already been called. Um, but just based on these different mill levy scenarios that staff has put together is kind of how we'll guide the conversation. But with that, I'll kind of turn it over to you for questions or comments or directions or what have you.
I do have a question, sorry. On one of the previous slides, you had the, uh, pay increases, three percent step, three percent COLA.
Yes, ma'am.
So does every?
All scenarios that I propose tonight include three percent step and three percent COLA.
Every employee will get a six percent, regardless of where they are on the step?
Yes.
Okay, I just have to understand that.
All the employees are on the step and grade system. If you remember our treatment, really.
Oh, I remember.
We've really stressed that if you don't keep up with the COLA at the minimum, we're going to get very far behind.
Right.
Yeah, step is more of a longevity, you know, piece of it, rather than the keeping up with the the cost of living at the COLA.
Very nice, right. I just want to make sure everybody got it. I don't know, I think in the past, I remember some money was allotted to certain individuals, and we didn't necessarily know how that worked.
Yeah.
I'm I'm just, I'm just making a comment, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
Every employee gets a six percent.
It's, that's how we've done, the stepping grade system pretty much is is, I say pretty much, it's exactly what it is. It's a grid and everybody, their position is slotted on that grid. And as it, as the council, uh, makes adjustments or or approves pay adjustments, they move towards that girl. It eliminates a lot of the the nuance or or fuzziness, as you said. Yes, ma'am.
What happened in the past, okay, that's what I wanted to know.
I just have a couple of comments. Uh, first off, awesome job, putting this together, all these numbers, and I know that's hours and hours of work. I just, I know, we appreciate you putting this together for us and really explaining it to us, so we can all understand it, and so does our our citizens as well. Uh, and I look back over our history and we've consistently, over years, we do some hillwork, you know, seriously, over years. And and I, I'm I'm concerned if we make any reductions moving forward, uh, just because of what we're seeing in our time and everything. I mean, every, everything's going up, just like that one house you pulled out, Zach, that went up fifteen percent. I think ours went up twenty percent, uh, which we have no control over. But I, we're all seeing that, cost of living and everything going up, skyrocketing. And I just am concerned in our general fund, if we make any, you know, decreases now, that we could be really asking, you know, getting ourselves in a little bit of trouble later on, especially with what we, what we want to see coming, you know, with facilities and adding staff. And and I think I've also heard, you know, from local chiefs one time or another, that, you know, it's been challenging to get staff here. And and it's somewhat is because of the pay rate. So, you know, if the three percent COLA is built into all three levels, that's, in all three options, that's great. But I, but I think my opinion for the mayor and for council is to, let's let's think about keeping the mill levy the same, option A, and and looking at possibly the increase in the COLA, more than three percent, for staff, to get us to a competitive and even more competitive, you know, pay rate, to really, so we, so we don't battle these existing, you know, staff, you know, changeover and different things. And I, Mark, you've done a ju- wonderful job of juggling and getting staff and part-time, chief of police or with them, you've done the same thing. And I, Mark, you've done a wonderful job of juggling and getting staff and part-time chief of police or whipmen, you've done the same thing for a long, long time. And so I think option A allows you to get the staff that you need in preparation for the future. And then if there's extra money or some way that, you know, we can pull out a general fund to maybe look at that total adjustment over five percent, if that's feasible, I think I would entertain that option as well.
So, so if I can, oh, sorry, go ahead.
You go.
I, I was going to say, so just to talk on that a little bit, so what option A would do is essentially set the maximum mill levy at the current mill levy rate. So if we, under that kind of, you know, those directions, if we were to, you know, set the public hearing with the maximum mill levy at the current mill levy rate, then we could, that gives us more room to moot, to, to play around in, to see, you know, what, how we could adjust the cola per some of that direction. And if it comes in lower, then we'll say, you know, maybe we can get a three and a half or four percent cola and still reduce the mill levy by a, a half percent or a, you know, three point, or a point seven five percent or a full percent. But that, that certainly gives us the widest latitude to work within. I will say that. And then your point about the other projects we have coming up, that's where our debt service, keeping that, that's why we've not, we've not made adjustments to the debt service going forward, because that's been the council's direction is, we know we've got, you know, Ninety-Eighth is on board. Uh, we've had recent meetings with our bond council and some of our other financial partners about these other projects we've got going on. We want to make investments, are in a position to make investments, trails, green spaces, obviously the facilities project is one of them. But that's why our debt service, as, as proposed, is kind of maintained as, as it is now. Because we, we've got capacity to support that investment with that level in the debt service.
I just wanted to clarify, because I didn't know if maybe I understood or misunderstood. So in each option, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, right, or correct me if I'm wrong, Zach, um, each option A, B, and C all included a six percent increase.
Solid.
And so are you saying increase it from six percent to four and a half, or to seven and a half?
I'm saying that we would choose option A that, that has more money in the general fund.
Mm-hmm. Well, option B probably has the most, but again, it's, it's just depending on how we shake out the staff. I think, I think what your direction is, and, and just correct me if I'm wrong, but essentially, the step, the three percent step is again, just progressing through the pay period. What you're asking us specifically is to look at adjustments to the cola. So the three percent is kind of built into that direction, and then it would be, would it be, you know, how we can adjust the cola and fit in whatever the cap is that the council gives us? Okay.
Okay. I, I just wanted to make sure I understood. I actually feel a little bit differently. Um, when we're looking at keeping the mill levy the same, uh, that increases our revenue by three hundred thousand, so it's not at a loss. It's three hundred and sixty-six thousand, so it's not at a loss to our city. In fact, even if we do a full mill reduction, that's still increasing the revenue to the city from our residents by two hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars. And so I just feel like, uh, it's fantastic that we're able to do increases in, in including, all of these include increasing our full-time employee by, uh, employees by ten percent, which is quite a big jump and beneficial in helping the, the quality of employment, having to support overtime, having to help with needed. Um, but on behalf of the residents, who have all got their taxability, you know, and most of them are feeling it to seven hundred dollars a year. You know, we're not the only taxing entity. I just don't think we can put more pressure on them year after year. Their taxes are going up and up and up, and we're talking about even at a one mil reduction, they're seeing an increase of a hundred and fifty dollars a year just from our city. And so I, I would be, I think one mil reduction is about as, as the least amount we get to offer our residents, um, considering how much our taxes have gone up. And from what I've heard from people, their taxes have gone up significantly in the last few years. And I realize we're not the only taxing entity, but we're just in this, we're several hundred of it, uh, of what they're feeling. And so, um, I, I agree with you. We've got to make sure we're looking out for the future. But I think in the future, if we need to, if we have to adjust later, then we can do that. But I feel like even option C kept our barrel fund at over fifteen percent and gave our, um, our residents, not even, not a tax break, is still increasing their bill a hundred and fifty dollars a year, um, but, but not quite squeezing them as hard as, um, as leaving it the same.
Zach, can you go back to that screen that shows the impact to the residents? So you're saying option C is what you're recommending, and then change per month, twelve dollars per month?
Hundred and fifty a year.
Saving twelve dollars a month, saving.
Yeah, for, well, that's just our city. So, um, if every, if every city, or every, I'm trying to say not every city, but every taxing entity left it the same, that's the notice we all got from the mill this week that increased our taxes up a hundred a year. So I think as a, as our city, and as we're reaching out to the other taxing entities during these meetings, saying, please reduce your mills to give us some tax relief. It would really help me on behalf of our city if I could say, we're doing our part, please do your part. Um, and so I would think option C would be the very most, I would want to, um, have our mills at that forty points.
I just be concerned that it's not enough, I mean, even just with option A, just having the resources and having the funding in place, because it's, you know, just like this fifteen percent increase that we've seen on the, on the trade value, I mean, that's just, that's not even, it's higher. I mean, everything that we purchase, everything we buy, fuel, oil, I mean, all the consumables that our city purchases has gone up more than the three percent or six percent.
I think-
Yeah, on that point, just, sorry, just on that point, too, just some quick numbers. You know, we, you know, we've got the budget broken up in these different areas. Materials, uh, which is really just, you know, the cost that we need to buy things to do our job, which is not really, you know, that's not really budgeted. We don't buy a lot of things out of the general fund, like big pieces of equipment. Um, but just kind of trying to maintain what we've got is an eight percent increase from one year to the next. And that's, that's probably cutting out some stuff, quite honestly. And that's just to put some context on, to your point, yeah, everything's costing more people and things.
I think I agree with the mayor with this, um, only, so I've, I've been torn about this the whole time. So what I would love to see is, I would love our, our people to be taken care of, all our EMS to be taken care of, cost of living to be, you know, what they would be able to afford to live off of, right? Um, but then at the same time, just like the mayor said, we're not the only taxing entity that's, that's on the back of these people of Wynette County. And so we see these people coming through the food line every other month and hear the stories and see the tears in their eyes and thankfulness that they have this food that's being given to them. And I just can't in the, in, like, I cannot, um, stand to see it even more. I mean, it may, oh, yeah, twelve dollars a month or a hundred and fifty, uh, but that's just us. That's with just us. And, um, I just think there has to be a happy medium where our people are being taken care of. Because if they're taken care of, then the citizens are also taken care of, right? Because you want somebody responding, you want, you don't want these guys being burnt out, you, uh, I mean, and I get it. My husband worked for Leavenworth County EMS for a long time. The pay was sucky, the benefits were sucky, and that's when he was a young paramedic. And the goal was always to get to the bigger, better, uh, departments. That's all it was. There was a lot of turnaround there also. That's just because they pay more, their benefits are better, like, but they have a bigger, they have more citizens that they're, the bigger areas that they're responding to, and they have more calls that they're responding to, is the only other thing. And so, um, I think, yeah, we should be competitive to people that are the same, uh, counties that are the same size as ours, have the same, you know, around the same, uh, you know, demographics, everything else. But I, there has to be something, I mean, that, the one mil is what I would agree with, but without hurting the citizens both ways. You want the first responders, you want people to be able to help them, you want them taken care of, but then you don't want them, you don't want to tax them out of the home. Because I've heard people, there's people in my neighborhood that are saying, if they continue to raise these taxes, I got to move out of here. And so I'm being, I'm-
That's why we, I mean, to your point, that is, that's the balancing act that staff's trying to do and take care of the internal folks and provide the tax burden relief that, that, that is appropriate, that we can, without affecting that, that service level piece of it that you're talking about. That's, those are hard decisions. That's, and that, that, you know, the appraisals really is what driving people's increases. And that's why we've tried to, and the county, too, has made some outreach in trying to, you know, open the hood a little bit on that process and explain to people how they can appeal it. But again, you know, that's, appeals aren't guaranteed either. So, yeah, I think you're, I think it's well stated. It's a, it's a balancing act for sure.
What's the difference in the fund balance or the general fund balance between option A and C?
Option A, it's a one point one nine, so fifteen point three, versus option C is fifteen point two, or one point one seven.
Oh, so not even-
It's, it's pretty, it's pretty slight, but option A also includes that full, that's where the staffing kind of changes from one to the other. That's why B is that median of, of, we can, you know, with respect to fund balance, it's almost a, 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 a half a percent in the fund balance more than option A, even though it does have that, that mill reduction in there.
Well, I don't think you'd even bring a situation to us that didn't even make sense.
Yeah, we would not, it's not my policy to bring forth a, a budget that violates our financial policy. Yes, I try it. At the very least, to do that.
Right.
I'm sorry. To piggyback on that, so option A spins into the reserve fund, about seventeen thousand, and option C, about eighty-five thousand.
They're, they're very close. It's, it's that staffing level that's the big difference from a, from a expenditure piece of it, between A and, between A and C. And again, not to focus too much on the specific points of A and C from a staffing model. We're talking about the max here that we want to, no, you want to give yourself really, uh, for we have that budget public hearing, uh, either next meeting or the meeting after that. How much room do you want to give yourself in, in figuring out where that level is? Is it a half mil? Is it a full mil? Is it no mil? This just sets that max of how high you can go in your decision making.
So, um, do we need to have a vote on that this evening? Is that what?
If you are prepared to move forward with the public hearing on the twenty-eighth, then, then you, you certainly can have that, yes, to set the public hearing for the twenty-eighth. Otherwise, we would, we would have to, so that the, the deadline to do, to have our public hearing for the budget adoption is September twentieth, which for our calendar is the first meeting in September. So either we have the public hearing for the budget at the next meeting or on the first meeting in September. And I think our point was, we're not going to get much more data. This materially going to change a lot of these estimates. So you're not going to, waiting two weeks doesn't really give us a lot of new, you know, information that could alter kind of the staff presentation, one way or the other.
Motion B, we're calling the public hearing or?
Calling the public hearing with the maximum mill levy of whatever you decide, yes.
Is that, is that difficult to muster? I mean, right now, I mean, if you knew that you had that third person at the beginning of twenty twenty-four, would that help on the oversight? And the kind of the pressure that the guys get out of the payment versus happening later in the year?
As far as agent wise, yes. But as far as time wise, it's a gamble. Whole concept of what is achievable, the large services, they don't have that part time, they get part time. They do a lot of whole sense of overtime, they live well. Lots of cash, they expect all the present, they're obviously absolutely comfortable. Man, they're also really working out. They always have a better option. Probably first, like, during, we'll, we'll have three, it's the same time, we'll take half the year. They're always feeling this over. I can actually outsource the algorithms that they're trying to get, it was a tough, hard time to run. Just, you have other challenges, it's a hard time to get it.
Thank you. And again, I can't thank everybody enough, staff, everybody who put this together and really thinking about it, and it's very, very helpful. It is a difficult decision, I think, for us on our end, because I, you know, I, I'm one of those people that I don't want to plan for today, I want to plan for tomorrow. And, uh, and that's why I really believe option A is still, uh, the best option for us. And I understand about the expense, I mean, we feel it in every, like you said, in everything, everything we purchase and buy, and we see the expense across the board. So we get it, uh, but, uh, I know it's a forty vote, so.
We're not voting on that tonight, though.
You're voting, you could be voting on, not the option, you're voting on the maximum. So a motion could be to, uh, uh, make a motion to call for a public hearing on August twenty-eighth, uh, for a ma, to consider a maximum mill levy of, if it's option A, it's forty-one point six nine two. If it's option B, it's forty point-
Forty-one point one nine two.
Forty-one point, uh, forty-one point one nine two, and then option C, forty point seven nine two, or wherever you want to. These are the staff ones that we brought together to put number.
I'll make the motion that we set the public hearing on August twenty-eighth with option A.
So can I just, for, for the sake of the minutes, the motion would be to call for a public hearing on August twenty-eighth to consider the maximum mill levy of forty-one point six nine two.
Yes.
Is that option A?
Yes, sir.
Well, it's not option A.
It's just the max.
It's just the max, yeah, which is, it's the max as presented, yeah, and option A. So we can go, we, so again, we can go at the public hearing, we will have two public hearings on the twenty-eighth, one for the R and R, one for this, and we can go down from there. But this is set our max.
We have a motion, oh, sorry.
The second was here a lot.
We have a motion in the second. Will the third please call them?
Yes.
A lot?
Yes.
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 Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Number seven, here's staff presentation related, related to site considerations for potential public works facilities.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be handling this, uh, as promised. Uh, from our, our last session, there was some consensus to bring options. And, uh, so again, this is somewhat fifty thousand foot view, so there still could be more options. Did we give you all options? We did not, but that would be a lead long presentation. So, uh, let's, let's just move through this, uh, where we're going to start as, the whole crux here, what we're asking you to do is give us consensus on which direction to go. Are we buying land and building a building, or are we rehaving existing structures that we have? Those, that's really what it comes down to, okay? So what we're, we're looking for is, we're going to present considerations for all of these properties. We're not giving you pros and cons, we're explaining to you for your information, and then you will direct us as it should be of which direction to go, okay? So let's start with, this is the Call Valley Commerce Center, this is Ninety-third Street. We met in executive session, we may have some information confidential, and we'll keep it that way. But this first consideration is the verbiage, Call Valley Commerce Center, okay? Second is, it's in a tip district, tax increment financing district, we talked about this last time, last time. So in this sense, this is a public building in a, in an incentive district, okay? So is, what's our intent if we're going to have a commerce district, for example? Uh, does it drive commerce? Is this building a part of that? Is that function a part of driving commerce? The other consideration, does it encourage, encourage complementing businesses? For example, if you build a hotel, maybe there's a restaurant, a fuel station, that's worth it. Does it encourage that? Other consideration is, we have to extend a street there. There's no street that goes to the D property, so we'll have to extend it. What's our cost to the city specifically? That may be a consideration, certainly would be. Uh, is it for sale? Consideration is, so far, won't we know if that it is, but, uh, there are some things of the location. First consideration on location is, it's the farthest south and east you can get, right? Everything is north and somewhat east-west a bit, right? So you're, you're going to be traveling quite a bit with your machinery, just again, consideration. It's in a floodplain, there's some floodplain to work around, not impossible, but certainly a consideration that we have to keep in mind. And there, there's a lift station there, that's, again, consequences are, they're the positive or the negative. But that's something another developer would have to work around. There's a lift station, there's a floodplain, that's one thing, so consideration. Now, consideration with the question we posed right away, we're buying land, there's no building there. So it would be a land acquisition consideration and still no building. And again, I mentioned it's farther south than all the others. Keep the trigger, man. All right, thank you. as far as, 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 as far
when we first started discussing public works and, and the potential there. And so I really think that can be improved. It's, it's an eyesore, and something we don't want to see in our parks. And so I think this has not only the benefit of not increasing a huge amount of debt or burden on our taxpayers, but also has the ability to have significant beautification opportunities in our city, but then we're gonna be on this outfit. I, I've been really, I really like this proposal.
Okay, I live there. I don't know who you all have talked to, but everybody around there hates that building. Don't want, they don't want it up there. If you guys, somebody, I have to look at it every single morning. So does everybody on Kansas Avenue, so does everybody on 110th. People coming down from 110th are going up 110th. First of all, it's, if you, if we go through and change the zoning for this, what's gonna happen to the next guy? Hey, will you change your zoning for this? Why won't you change it for me? Now we're back to the point, it's, oh, it's okay for us, but not for you.
Chief, did we need to change zoning?
Yes.
Because it's present use?
I don't think so.
I didn't, I didn't.
It's zoned residential.
Well, that's residential and Ag.
But I think the existing structure that, that is in the sense where legal law will not be allowed, but we can continue to be legal law.
So we're not changing the zoning, but I have spoken with multiple residents, and they can bring some letters or names, if that would be interest, of interest to folks.
Mara, do you want that in your front yard? Let's buy the property across from you.
What I'm looking at in, in the proposal, I would be absolutely fine with that. I would be absolutely fine with that. This, this is nicer than, than some things on my street, actually. And so I would be fine with, I could bring letters and from, from neighbors that live.
I'll never vote for this, never.
I'd like to hear what people around there. I am for sure in favor of saving us millions of dollars. Sorry, no, what were you saying?
I said, I'd like to hear from the neighbors. I mean, because they're the ones that are gonna have to, to live with it over there.
I've never heard any good comments about that property that's for public work. All I've gotten is complaints about it. I say our equipment is rotting. Why do we have equipment sitting in the parking lot out here tonight? There's tractors and stuff out here right now tonight. Why, if they're sitting out in the weather and they're rotting? And I say this all the time, I'm the old guy. I used to drive around with pliers and screwdrivers in my vehicle to fix signs. Now we've actually got a public works department. Earlier tonight, you're talking about not wanting to fund another employee in the parks department, but now you're talking about two different facilities, one north and one south? That doesn't make any sense to me whatsoever. We've already got the funding for the property that's available down on Woodin. The, the funding is there. It's a TIF district, the street can be halfway paid for by the landowner that's down there, by the person that owns the property right now. It would get a street, it would draw people in, where the TIF tax dollars could help the city. I can't go for this up here either. I remember when this building was built, and it was just thrown up there because the administration in this office at that time wanted a fire station next door to their house.
Are we talking about the, the half a million dollar one, or like the, yeah, the half a million dollar one? Is that what you're saying, that you would rather have it there?
Yeah, nobody lives there.
Yeah, that's not a half.
Okay, so, but a half a million dollars, so this is, and I'm, when you were talking about the sidewalk, saying almost a hundred thousand dollars for that sidewalk, and near Williamson Farms was a lot of money. That's a lot of money to me. But the sidewalks are something that the residents are gonna be able to use, and obviously want.
That is correct.
And so.
I did not say that I was against.
No, 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 I didn't say you were saying. Right, right, but you did say it was a lot of money. Yeah, no. And.
That's gonna end up costing about a hundred fifty thousand.
Right, and I don't disagree with that, but I'm saying, that's a lot of money also. So I think while we're taking in consideration of how much, you know, the sidewalk's gonna cost, which I think we fully should, we should be spending our money wisely. I think we should do that with this also.
This is apples and oranges. Building that would protect your assets.
And I think what he's brought to us has, I mean, there are options other than the wooden, other than the wooden.
Who did the research on this? Who did this? And what did this cost that, that was presented to me tonight? I've asked for, I've asked for public work, or for executive session to discuss this kind of stuff, where we could discuss openly without the public involved in it, so we could come to some kind of a conclusion. I was denied that. I'm denied the sidewalk that I want up at the Dollar Store, but all, I'm supposed to accept everything else that's thrown out here in front of me. This is not what I was elected to do.
So just to clarify.
I was elected to take care of this community in the best way that I know how, and this is the best way that I know how.
So.
This loses me in elections in the park.
The executive session, I, I will touch on. And that's because I felt like our, our general policy is to do as much work, and have as much business in the public eye as possible. It is very important to me, and it has been since the beginning, that we are as transparent with our community as, and we're talking about.
Not transparent here, how when you get, to give these licenses, we're giving it to all of us.
Potentially millions of dollars, and taking property off of the commercial tax rules. Chief, did we hire outside to do? I haven't said that today. So this is staff work, it didn't cost extra money. The consensus at our last meeting by four people on our governing body was, please bring this option. And so our staff respected that decision. And I'll tell you a little bit, because I, I knew we were discussing it tonight. And so as far as the commercial district, it, it is not centrally located. That was pointed out earlier. This is the far corner of, of our city. So it's as far, more, most, the most wear and tear on our equipment as possible. It's located in a tax increment finance district. This removes an entire parcel, parcel from the ability to contribute to the tax reimbursement. So how a TIF district works is, we said, we're gonna invest in this part of the city because it is right by 435 and Woodin. This is a fantastic place for development. We might be able to get some cash registers in there, diversify our sales tax revenue, which is much needed. And so I am not at all in favor of taking a commercial parcel off of the tax rolls to put a, put a public works facility, and not allow it, and taking a tax parcel out of our TIF district that we specifically made to improve and incentivize development at 435 and Woodin. Additionally to that, I have looked at the parcels right off of Woodin that are about three acres, these parcels are between one and five acres. That would remove those acreage, those properties with developed, that are developed, not the vacant lots, run between twenty, I mean, up to eighty-five thousand, but twenty to eighty-five, average thirty-five thousand dollars a year, we would be removing from the tax rolls if we take a parcel that we can no longer develop, and turn it into a public works site. Because once we put a public building on there, it no longer is on our tax roll. So we're removing it from a TIF district, we're removing it from the, the tax rolls, and that's the commercial parcel, taking away the possibility of about thirty-five thousand dollars a year from the tax rolls. Commercial properties additionally are assessed at higher rates than residential. We take a parcel away from potential a drive-through hotel, something that we, we would want for the tax revenue in that end of our city. The purchase price that we're looking at, we do not have the money for, when you're looking at the purchase price and paying for a street. None of the, now, there, there was another option, or a couple of options that were presented tonight, that we would have to build a street. I'm not a big proponent of building a street for a public works building when we have options of using the infrastructure we already have. Because again, when we're looking at the future economy, what are we putting on the backs of our taxpayers? And you guys, additionally, as a governing body, we've, we've talked about municipal buildings. That's a huge project, that's a priority of this governing body. That's going to increase our debt loads substantially in the near future. So taking all of that into consideration, it doesn't at all seem like wisdom to, to take a commercial property and, and put a public works building there, especially in the TIF district. The land would still need utilities, it would still need a building. We, we would be over half a million dollars before we even get utilities there to building there. And so that, to me, it just seems like it would, it would be, it would show much more wisdom in, in looking at, okay, what do we actually have? How can we use what we actually have to improve our city? And lessen the tax burden on our residents.
Do you know where, excuse me, Scott, do you know where most of the public works buildings in this town, in this area are? KCK is at 51st and Parallel State Avenue. Canaline Road, I mean, the city limits is 142nd. Overland Parks, they just built a brand-new one, which is really nice, over there on 69 Highway, basically Antioch and 69 Highway. Overland Park goes clear out to 200 and, I think it's 79th Street now, and they go all the way in to 63rd. Fairways is the same way. I don't know of any city that they're centrally located. You know, I'm not, I don't care about this spot, I just don't want it in front of my house. I don't care.
And I think the difference is, is I'm not looking out for my own interest, but the interest of the taxpayers as a whole.
I'm looking out for everybody in my neighborhood.
I've talked to people in your neighborhood.
Really? Who?
Absolutely.
I wanna know. I do not. Everybody I've talked to said.
I guarantee you, I can bring letters before the next meeting, if that would be.
I would really like to hear from the residents. I mean, they're, like I said, they're the ones that are gonna.
Hold on, hold on. Other time, we gotta take notes on this.
Okay.
The forum is, yield to the mayor, please. Say, "Mayor, be ready, please." There's no way John's talking, type all this down. Okay, that's, that is the protocol, it's Article 1. Yield to the mayor, the mayor will call on you.
Nope, go ahead.
Am I good? Yeah. I, I mean, I've got a lot of comments here, and I, and I, and I, I really don't have any triggers other than, you know, talking with CE, and, and asking him, you know, if this, if this space will work, and then the addition of the 40 by 80, you know, if, if that's gonna be adequate for what he perceives in the future. I really want his input. And then is this 40 by 80, Mark, I'm assuming you did this, is it the scale to the other building?
Oh, no, and I didn't do this, this is Bradley.
Okay, for our. Is it the scale?
The scale.
Okay. Uh, that definitely really helps. And, and if we, I think with this drawing that's, that's done, maybe with the comments of, of Councilman Bishop and Mr. Mott, maybe we can, you know, have a, a public hearing on it, and get the, the feedback, and, and send this to all the residents in the area, you know, that's connected to it, and just bring them in, and just have a discussion about it. Because I, I definitely think it does impact, you know, what they believe, and what they, what they perceive this to be. And, you know, and I'm, I'm all about saving money too, but I, I wanna make sure we find the right space for, for, for our guys, for our equipment. We need it to be indoors. I'm not in favor of a north and a south. I'm in favor of the, the north being a satellite, you know, for up there mowing, instead of bringing it all the way back, wherever that is. They can be up there to this north satellite station, if you will, if that's what we call it. But having two areas like what you proposed, Mark, I, it, it, it does work in some sense, but it would like in two areas of salt and sand mix, in two different areas, and now you have to have two back goes and two skid steers. You know, load that, that equipment, for that, the truck. So it just, there's some complexity there, and some more expense that, that drives that. I, I, and I, and I really appreciate the passion of everybody up here, you know, and, and have their beliefs. I think that does add a lot. But I, I really think we need to look at the nuts and bolts. If this, if we own this, it's paid for, if, if CE believes that this can be the space, and if we get the, you know, have a public hearing, and let's see what everybody's opinion in on it, or their opinion is on it, then I think we can discuss it from there.
I agree. I don't wanna say I, I, the word cheapest way, that doesn't sound right. But to build a facility that works, or facilities, CE, you obviously have, must have a lot to say in this. What, what you need, what you want and what you need are two different things. And what the city, what our residents and taxpayers are gonna have to pay for is a really, really big decision. I, I don't. The property we talked about first down in the industrial district, I, great, didn't really like the floodplain. Not really liked the idea of building the whole street. That's a lot of money. Now, there's my three cents. I don't know how the residents feel about this, if it can be made to look presentable, if it can be used to your needs, CE. That sounds like we're gonna save a ton of money doing this. Is it gonna work? I don't know. But it sounds like we have several options. But I, I don't know how much of a task it would be to go to every option you gave us and put some dollars down it. But, right, I, um. Right. No, no. Well, I, I think there's a handful that just probably wouldn't work, wouldn't work at all.
Let me disclose, there are, there are a few other options.
No, no, no.
Whether or not we should do land, build a building, or discuss and or analyze what we're gonna do to start a facility or facility,
And that, I'm sorry, my, my final comment is, and I understand the equipment needs some shelter, it needs to be protected. And this, it doesn't sound like we're, we're not under the gun to get this done, but I think the best decision needs to be made, so we've gotta explore all the options. We have to explore all the options. I know we're gonna have a facility, administrative facilities in the future. What's gonna happen with some of our other structures? So anyway, I just, I, I think, nobody needs to make a decision on that, but we obviously have to give you some direction, where to go with this.
Yeah, just one more thing, I mean, I'm not in favor of this spot, just because I don't think it's big enough personally, been around, you know, making sites, things, it's all my line. And knowing what kind of equipment we're gonna need in there, and what we're gonna potentially have. And I'm afraid that this site is, you know, we're gonna, it's gonna be too small really, really quick. And then, you know, it'd be great to be able to say, we're gonna put all of our equipment in, inside the building. It's not realistic, it's just not realistic. We need, you know, any kind of a facility, you need a lean-to, and, you know, you park most of your equipment under a lean-to, and the back of it is facing to the north, in this case. You know, the property doesn't, is not conducive to that. So I'm glad that we have options, and I understand about saving, you know, money as much as we can. And but I, I think, I think what I'm hearing, there's a lot of interest in this location. And I think, before we can move on, we really need to either see if this is gonna happen, or it's doable, or rule it out completely because of, you know, site constraints, or, you know, whatever, whether the citizens are completely against it, and, you know, the mayor said, talked a bunch, they're for it. Well, it'd be nice to really bring them all in, and have a, a bunch of meetings about it, have some discussion, look at it, show them what we're thinking, and then again, I want to make sure Mr. Goodall has a really good representation on what he perceives in the future, you know? We wanna make sure he has, you know, what he perceives he needs. I'm done.
So I've heard from the midst of conversation, you mentioned exploring, you're talking about exploring this particular site, that there's some interest in exploring.
I think, I think so, yeah. To, to sum it up, I think it would be worth looking at, so we have something to present with our residents, to present to the council, to show if it's feasible. If it's not, it's not. You know, but I, I think that this has been the first attempt at really trying to provide us options by staff, and I think that's really appreciated. That's what we ask for, is options. And so I really, I, I really appreciate the time that, I know Bradley's probably spent his, spent his time on this, but, yeah, that, that you guys spent looking at actual options to bring to us, because I think that just shows with them, and, and saying, okay, let's, let's put it on the table, and have a discussion with each other, and, and weigh it all out. But I, I think, and, and you guys can, can weigh in here if I'm wrong, that if staff would just bring to us something to present, is, is the square footage what we need? Can we, because stuff outside has been an issue. Do we, are we storing stuff outside? I'd kinda like to see more information about the south end. You know, Councilman Scott brought up the, the concern of, you know, two, two loaders. We, we need two loaders if we separate this unit. That's, that's something. Um, that's, that's something that, that's a good consideration. Yeah, and so, um, uh, but, but ideally, whatever we're looking at needs to not have junk visible to the community. I think it's really the point. And then if, if we can accomplish it, let's see what we can do from there. And if you come back and say it's not, then it's not. But, but I think we're, I mean, this looks, this looks hopeful to me and, and saving our folks a lot of money, especially when we're looking at municipal buildings in the near future.
So, we want to focus our attention on what you want us to deliver. So, we'll start with priority one, existing building, annual building. We'll give you some more detailed information about all the square footage, what we might be able to do in more of a rendering and a presentation and maybe some cost assessment to that. We understand that this is probably the building that we could put on there without really violating and not being formally, we absolutely don't, right? So there's only so much space we can do. We think we have that rendered. We're going to put some cost estimates, some ideas around that and bring that for discussion. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, we, we would definitely want to be a good neighbor.
Yes. So, aesthetics, visibility issues, inside storage, making sure it accommodates the square footage that we think it should around that six to six thousand plus.
Before you do that work though, I mean, should we do the public hearing piece first with the drawing that you have, just in case there's pushback on that or?
Well, I think what we were, this, this may not be absolute, maybe we need to get maybe some of our, we have an architecture firm already on retention, maybe we could add, ask them to help us in the situation about, okay, what is, what is going here? There's some things that we can do, I think, to better prepare, say, hey, this is what this looks like, this may be a cost associated. What do you folks think out there that live around there? What do you think if we did this? You can get some feedback, that would, we can put the presentation out publicly, that's what we're doing. Don't think we're at a, absolutely, don't get a contract on this, kind of a, kind of a, the hearing is, in a sense, what we're doing right now, this is somewhat of a hearing discussion, right? Publicly participate, they'll hear this presentation. So it could be a, it would be one more, more in-depth session like this, but our focused attention will be on this one and if you tell me the south one as well, we'll do that. We can certainly focus on the north building and show you what it might look like, so you can then inform your public and say, do you think this would be appropriate? Because if there's no support, we don't want to do something that would be problematic. I just, I would hate to spend money with an architect and do something nice and fancy and, and then have a public hearing and then, you know, four out of six neighbors say, you know, I just don't want to do that.
I think it would be important though to show them, uh, an accurate description of what it would be and, and to hear of, will this hide the equipment or not? Like, before we go to an architect, I think we talk about, can we get the equipment inside? Um, I, I, I wouldn't rule out the south end building because that is, uh, an atrocity and we don't want it in our parks and it needs improved. So we may as well look at that footprint, um, like Councilman Scott talked about, a lean to for equipment that improves square footage, but we don't want equipment. I don't want my equipment outside. Our residents don't want our, our specific equipment outside. And so, um, but I think we would have something to show them, uh, so that they're informed as to, okay, what are we talking about? And to make sure that we deliver on what we're saying we're going to do, because I don't want to say, oh, it's going to be all inside and then come up with something that is going to leave junk out of the house.
Really conceptually at some sort of discussionary, uh, level that you could present, say, do you think this would be a good plan here, public? And we can help with that, communication stuff right here and wonders, uh, with the internet, put things out to folks, get this kind of picture. We can, we can use this conceptually, uh, to put that out there to get some feedback, a couple of surveys, like I was assuming. And so we can do that for you absolutely. And then, of course, come back. I think we need more detail, if that's what, but our focus is, what are we going to do with this particular spot? Do you need some details so you can make an informed decision? Because right now it's still speculative, it's pretty high view. So we can, we can hone down on this and one of the priorities is about communication publicly so we can get some feedback. And you will have something in your hand in which you can inherit to them as well. Would that be okay?
Yeah, I think we could set up an online, the rendering has been put forward and really keep it kind of broad about, it's definitely the two things that we are, you know, needing to move forward and really have a couple of input pieces and the discussion on the current facilities, the square footage that we need and the site getting accomplished. And I think, I think feeding a service of that, we come together and, you know, we're pushing, we're pushing, we're pushing the admin side of things, but now, you know, broadly, what does the public think about? Or even, even more broadly, essentially, a, a public works site at, you know, in a residential area versus, you know, off, out of, out of, uh, out of residential area. Give, because, I mean, to your point, it does affect more than just the folks on the, on that stretch, but that is a very minimal stretch, one hundred and ten street. Whether you live down that stretch or not, if you're coming down, I don't know, coming down one hundred and ten street, it's far from, from the highway, you're going to see it. So you might have an opinion whether or any other, you know, whether you live on that stretch, that side of Kansas City or not. So just to give the public some more input, some more ability to provide it, but we've got a lot of different opportunities that we can, we can use. To your point, Eric, I've got really, you know, of the essence, so I've, we've got a little bit.
Right, and, and that was my concern with just saying, you want a public works facility because what they picture is sitting right there and not what we're.
Yes.
So, yeah, I think we do, doing it in the right order so we, we know what we're asking about is really important.
Phase one, we're going to focus on this particular building and maybe potentially the south building. And we'll bring you back some level of discussionary item that you can then, and we will take as well. If you want us to, you'll, you'll have to direct us when you see that piece of work, say, yes, we want you to put this out there and let's get the surveys going and do those things. So our goal is to put something together that you can then decide on, but it's specific to this building now. Then if that's not what you want, we can go and revisit the land acquisition piece, right? And then, then we start from there. And we'll know square footage, we want six to eight thousand square feet, you know, those kinds of things, if we're going to build brand new around that.
Because there were some interesting other sites that you presented as well, but, but potentially we could consider. I don't want to spread the net too far right now, but if it, you know, if it doesn't work then we need to, just like we said before, leave ourselves open to options, so.
That section of ground on Fourth of Lake, I mean, that's attractive as all get out with it being flat and large and, but I'm sure it's going to be expensive. And again, if that's good, we could, if we're going to lose, you know, some tax revenue for that, that, that wouldn't be good. But I, I just want to comment again, from Mr. Bishop, you know, he said, you know, what he said about driving by and seeing it and, you know, I, I get that because I drive by it, you know, twice, three times a day, four times a day, uh, and I always look at it and I'm always looking, not in, it, it, it is not, it's not unsightly, but it's not pleasant right now, but I could definitely see the, you know, progression of this, if we could evolve it, again, if it would evolve to, to make, to solve what he needs it to do. But I think there's some benefit to having Mr. Bishop and myself driving by it every day and especially in the evening and after hours, just making sure nobody's messed with anything, you know, because there's, there's going to be a lot of money sitting in that facility. And so, you know, having it in a area that we can see it frequently, I think it does have value. We just need to make sure that our citizens that, that, that see it every day, twenty-four hours, you know, and it, it's not appalling to them. So that's the question.
That's a good thought for the security.
Mayor, I think we have good direction, we'll bring back what we think, that, you know, the image in our head and present that to you and then we can move on from there.
Sounds good.
Thank you very much.
Item number eight, consider a motion to recess into executive session pursuant to KSA seventy-five, forty-three, nineteen, Z two for consultation with us, the attorney, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship related to the matter of potential litigation. Uh, how much time do we? Okay.
Wow, that sounds good.
And it turns five. No way.
I don't know if we've ever.
Returning at eight, eight twenty-five, is that? Eight thirty to be safe?
Move there and come back.
So I guess we need the motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Do the motion in a second, will the third, please call roll?
For recess into executive session. That's what I, yes. It's really dirty, but it's going to be going.
Um, council, attorney, is this interim city manager?
So, right?
Second.
We have a, oh, I think I already said it.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes. Only five minutes, here's the second one. First stop, first thing, ma'am.
This conference will now be recorded.
Make a motion to return to regular session?
Second.
Do the motion in a second, will the third, please call roll?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, on to item number nine, city manager report, um, from the city manager of the East. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Mayor. I have nothing more, the staff doesn't have anything. We have been communicating, communicating and communicating, we do as much as we possibly can, check your email, you're getting a Friday report, that's what we're doing is, you know, we practice some brevity, even though we're at eight thirty today, uh, kind of start the control, a little bit of, so we can get out of the least of time. So you have all the background that you need, if there's something missing, we'll stand from now for questioning from the people and we just want, staff, I have nothing more.
Uh, Councilman Scott.
Um, wow. Mark, I really, really like the communication that you're, you put together, like the, some of the major project status report, uh, and then your, I think you put out another meetings or, or points or bulletins or something, or maybe it was just this, was it just this one?
Oh, that is a project report.
And then you do another?
Yeah, on, on, every Friday, my intention is to give you what I titled manager minutes, what's been going on through that week. That's all. Give you a couple of weeks of recording and then we can come in here and you, there's a specific topic you want to talk about, you're, you have some background and then you can address it.
Yeah, no, that's great information. I appreciate you keeping us in the loop. And, uh, again, I just want to, you know, thank the council for, you know, their, their passion about, you know, doing the right thing for the city and, uh, I've been here not as long as, uh, Mr. Malott, but, you know, twenty-plus years, but, um, I definitely think that we're making the right decisions for, for our city and for the tax burden for that matter. So I don't have anything else. Thank you.
Councilman Frederick?
Oh, so, um, see? So I'm going to make kind of a comparison. So tonight we had discussion about the sidewalk back on one hundred and fourth street, going down to the school. Lot of support for it, a lot of residents came and talked about it, quite a bit of money, but we had some good discussion up here and your task with looking at a few different options, possibly saving some money. And I think that should, um, mirror the public works facilities the same way. So we have to decide up here, but we have to task you all with looking for the best possible options. I know it's, it can be a lot of work, you do a lot of work, you bring stuff to us, we turn around, say, go do some more, so, not apologies, but we're, we're trying our best. And thank all the staff that's always involved, Bradley, thank everybody involved for always doing the work and the homework and the research and bringing us the numbers and bringing us the information. So, thank you all for that. Um, Zach, as always, thank you for the presentation. Always thank you. You put a lot of work into that and sorry if I had too many questions and.
That goes forward.
It's right, right, good discussion. Um, fourth street and K thirty-two, where the fireworks stand was. Do we have any notice to the property owners to get the six-foot grass cut?
More than likely, we only have.
Okay, just it.
And so I could follow up and I could say, they, they, we only have to notify them once and then we can force them to cut the grass. So, more than likely it's been a violation before, therefore we're probably giving them.
It usually is, it usually is.
But we will follow up if you want an answer.
Chief Widdam might like this, the only good thing about that fireworks stand was the grass was cut. Just wanted to make note of that. Um, question on the, uh, the bills, the, what, remind me again, maybe we talked about it, what was the negative one hundred and seventeen thousand some transfer? What was that or what is that? Did we talk about it before?
It's the one, I think it's the one twelve transfer that.
Maybe it is.
That, that's referenced on that cover page.
Right.
Essentially it was a correcting journal entry, uh, related to some, uh, making sure the money was correctly allocated out of the bond funds. I'm just working with our new finance, uh, manager to, right now it's accounted in there and from a cash perspective, it is backed out, it's just not, that, that amount of money should not have been taken out of the, should not be reflected in the general fund. It's been corrected from a cash standpoint, so the cash in the general fund, on the general ledger, I should say, matches the cash in the bank. We just need to figure out the best way to account for it in that actual line item.
Okay.
He's, it's, he's, he's a, our new accounting manager is very meticulous with those details.
You gotta be.
If the direction is to get that out, he'll, he'll come back with fine questions about, will whether it'll affect this or that, but we just need to sit down and make sure that it's.
Thank you. Did we talk about this before? Have I just completely?
I don't recall, maybe.
Okay, okay, thank you. I mean.
But that's what it is, that, that money in the general fund transfer is not a.
Gotcha.
It was money that was, that journal entry was a correcting journal entry, it's going to be more accurately reflected in that specific line item. From a cash perspective, it's all shaking out like it's supposed to.
Gotcha. Chief Widdam, there is, um, the fire department budget, there's a negative amount for vehicle, vehicle repair, vehicle maintenance, what was that?
You have to have, uh, it gets, it's, it's part of that.
How old is that vehicle? Gotcha. Wait, I know I had another question here, or it's your question, but it's a statement. You made a comment earlier about we built a sidewalk from here to the post office. So where is this sidewalk you're wanting to build to the Dollar General? Like, I mean.
Somehow from the north side of railroad track at the back.
Okay. So you don't want to take that sidewalk and go down on a K thirty-two-ish? You want to go back in?
If you go down K thirty-two, you're going to have to go K nine. But when you drive thirty-two highway or fourth street and you see women carrying babies.
I see them all the time.
You see people in motorized wheelchairs.
I see them.
People on walkers, you see ladies with babies in wagons, you see people that live in the high rise and are halfway crippled, happen to go to Dollar Street.
I see them all, I do.
They don't have a safe way to get over there.
And go through the grass that's hot.
Or.
Sorry.
Get bit by a snake or whatever.
Right.
Or get run over by a dump truck.
So my question is, so you're wanting the city at some point to pursue, got to have to go through the railroad, obviously, and.
Well, the railroad, the railroad crossing there, pedestrian crossing there, we'd have to.
They're closer to the bank.
Yeah.
I just have never been able to figure out where you're wanting that sidewalk to come from.
Well, that's, I don't know, and I don't know where to get it. You'd have to acquisition land on the north side of the railroad driveway to the west and then.
Behind.
And then north, you know, this is.
Need to draw it out for me. Can you draw that out for me sometime? I will, I know, I, I'm curious, I want to see it.
But I, I drive, I'm the retired guy, I got, I'm the guy that drives around, I drive around, see them, see people walking, you know, need something, that's the only person that I know, I mean, seriously.
But I think, no, I, I totally, and we've talked about this, but I have never sat here and said, you want this sidewalk to go, and maybe you should draw it out and give, give some direction.
I talked to Mike before, you know, and he said, it's going to be a nightmare to figure out where it's good to have, but it's basically done. And I'm not against, I'm sorry, I'll wait.
That's okay, that's my.
I get going, I'm sorry.
That's my transfer to you. Go ahead. Thank you.
Yeah, Councilman Malott, here.
The, I want the gallery, the people to understand that I am definitely passionate about what happens in Edwardville. I sometimes express myself in the wrong way. My wife says, would you please just shut up? And I said, no, honey, I won't. But we've been married for 50, 40, 70. I am in favor of the sidewalk, but I think that it can be done a different way because we've talked about that sidewalk since I helped Steve when he built that property down there, I was involved in some of the building of that. And there is access on the other side. I've complained for the last three or four meetings about the speeds on 102nd Street. And we've got a speed trailer up there now. It's been there for about three weeks now. I appreciate that. It's the same thing in front of the cemetery. The roads are, we've got the road straightened out, cleaned up and they're, and it's a speed. They, they can really roll on it. And I see people walking those streets and it's a wonder that we don't have somebody that gets killed once in a while. But the other concern on the sidewalk is the, kind of, the school district has to be involved in, with that. They're going to have to have a crossing guard put there because at the bottom of the hill where the north entrance to the school is, they're going, when it goes across, the way the plan looks at it, it's going to go right into the side of the bank. They've got to go up. So that's going to be stairs or ADA accepts accessible, accessibility for people up there. And then they got to cross across the driveway that's entrance into the school where the parents come and pick their kids up and the cars are also there. But that's the school district, going to definitely have to be involved in that. Now, yeah, the sidewalk can be put down the west side of 104th Street, sure, it could. But it seems to me like it's very expensive to do that. I'm not against it. Majority, you know, the majority will rule on that. So, I mean, that's the way that goes. But that's, that's what I feel. And my passion for Edwardville is not to put lipstick on a pig, as somebody in Washington said at one time, on a building that is, to my estimation, is unusable for what it's being used for. I think that we need to explore property to put a new, nice facility on for our employees and for the residents of our city. So that's kind of where I stand on that. I don't like that property up there for what it's being used for right now. There's got to be some options for that. And, you know, people disagree with me, that's what's cool about the United States. If you can come up with your opinion and you can be disagreed with, that's, that's what it's all about. So anyway, that's all I'm going to say about that. I wanted to ask, uh, city manager, I guess I'm used to saying chief, city manager, uh, I had mentioned something about codes to you earlier this, like, last week. Has anything been happening about that or you talking privately about that?
Some action over on the old city property, that sort of thing.
Yeah.
Again, I think, you know, they get noticed. So these things, they, they don't move as fast as, somebody's speeding and they get a ticket, right? They don't move like that.
Yeah.
So they get opportunities, so it's in motion. I passed on the information and I'm presuming that, given that there has been some activity on that particular piece of property, I would say they receive that notice and are maybe making some efforts now. What we don't know is if, because we do things on a handshake, we, we're not going in there and saying, you're under arrest for having bad property.
And I don't expect.
That's not our approach. So maybe a handshake where we try to, hey, let's work this out so we can get this going. I have to give you a formal notice because that's been our approach. However, let's agree, you and me, to clean this piece of property. So it may not be as fast, but if we can get to the end result without making people all totally upset and we get a clean piece of property, that's our approach.
Well, I think that's one thing that you're to be complimented on is the fact that we do keep it small-town friendly on those kind of issues. And, you know, I mean, it can escalate into bad things.
Yes.
I think as long as you've got that approach, it's a pretty cool thing. And that's what I, I love about our public servants in Edwardville is, you know, you never get complaints about the police department, fire department, public work. All I ever get from residents is compliments. And I very, I get, very seldom do I ever get into kind of a complaint. And that's to your credit all over here. The other thing, um, I got to do it. What's up with the silent crossings? Is the construction done now and why is somebody not pushing that? Can we have attorneys visit with the railroad or something?
Well, what I'm going to do is have, uh, our public works director follow back up as a, kind of a lead back on the project. We think there are some failing in that, in that new median that they built that, uh, that have maybe re, have to be reconstructed.
I thought that you gave a report that said that 98th Street was done. Didn't I see that in some minutes or something?
Talking about silent crossing.
Silent crossing.
Well, now, again, they, they thought it was done, you know, but now there has been some pushback on reconstruction at 98th Street. If you recall, it was too long, the median, so they had to cut that back. It didn't meet the standards that were in the documents and they're very meticulous about that. So they had to cut that back now. They measure right, you know, it's curve to curve, inner to outer, that sort of. So there was some design and construction flaw in that, the way they approached it. So they had to redo it. So that's our status we're doing right now is that they've said, I think.
Maybe I dreamed, maybe I dreamed that you reported it was ready.
I think, I think we thought there was a time that where everything was completed. The fence went up, that was already done.
Go back to a nightmare.
More than likely, there was a reinspection and/or, hey, we noticed this and you got fixed it. So we will, we will follow that up as a priority, get a status report from whoever. So it's either, we got to call the UG or the railroad.
I appreciate that.
It might be difficult either way, but we will try.
I want to apologize for keeping, making that up or bringing that up, but it's been too long for that project to be where it stands. And, I mean, it's time for somebody to start rattling some sabers, is what the attorney said.
You were asking that, did you hear the train?
Oh, I hear them. I, I hear, believe, I hear what?
They were going on.
See, I visited the project on 102nd Street today and it's, I think that company is really doing a good job. It's legacy, I believe it's who it is. We need to keep them in mind for future projects. They were, I went up, they looked at me with hard ass and I said, I'm on the city council, I'm just visiting. They said, well, come up and look at it. So I went up and looked at them, they told me all about it. It's really a good project going on and they were really a good company. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Bishop?
Yes. Hey, Zach, is there a way you could send us a hard copy of your presentation tonight? So we.
Yeah, I can.
Just email and I can print it off or whatever.
No, for sure.
Yeah, okay, thanks. When Mike was still here, I was passionate about the building 98th, K-32 Northwest Corner to condemn it. Because one of our guys is going to get killed in that thing if he catches on fire. It's, it's a not Northwest Corner, 98th, K-32. It's the old auto, it used to be. It was an auto parts store years and years ago, but it's a, just, it's fallen down, it's disrepair. We need to tear it down.
Yeah. It does add some challenge.
Yeah. I mean, it's going to, somebody's going to get hurt, some kid's going to play in there and next thing you know, it's just a mess.
They've come forward, you know, they've had dumpsters over there, they've done some work. There's always been a lot of talk that it was going to be another huge far lot in two years. But they did do some work over there internally and, but I said, I don't know the salvageability of their project, but we'll get an update on that and we'll add that as well as before.
Okay, thanks. And I want to congratulate Chief Widdam. The International Association of Fire Chiefs Conference is going on, starts today, I think, was it today? I used to belong to that association. He's presenting again. For a town this size, fire department our size, to be a, asked to be a presenter, that speaks volumes for us. You know, I mean, it's, it's something else. I mean, I, I would go to the, I went to it several times and, you know, usually get your big city guys, Boston's, your New Yorks and Chicago's, but to have a city of 4,600, have our fire chief present to, and, I mean, it's international, there's people from all over the world come to this thing. I think it's pretty cool. Congratulations. Yeah. And I will say one more thing, one thing, a 40 by 80 building, I got one. The minute you build it and you open the door, it ain't big enough. Right, Mr. Scott? It's not big enough. I wish mine was larger, but I can't, you know, can't build it. Anyway, that's all I got.
Councilman Adcox?
I just have a couple of things. Thank you, everybody, for the presentation. They were amazing and very helpful. Thank you for the footwork, getting all the, you know, options together for us because I think that was the one thing that we did want, was more options. I, I don't like the wooden road. I just think it's going to be too much money. I just want to be able to save money where we can and make a smart decision for the taxpayers' dollars. I think they, they deserve that. I would love for something that, for them to see that's going to be almost about what it's going to look like if, you know, the south and the north end. Because I, I want them to see something and, I don't want them to see something and think,